Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, certainly those in attendance this evening, and those watching at home. This is the November 25, 2024 Exeter Select Board Meeting. I've just called to order. And then there were three. We do have a quorum. Unfortunately, due to unavoidable conflicts, our Vice Chair, Molly Cowan, is absent, as is our Clerk, Julie Gilman. But to my right, we have Select Board Member Dan Shartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
And we have Select Woman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
Good evening. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. And we have our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Select Woman Belanger, if you would please this evening, if you could assume the role of the Clerk.
Absolutely.
With Select Woman Gilman's absence, that'd be appreciated. Before we get into a public comment and then the swearing-in of two officers, I would just like to offer sincere gratitude and recognition to our Fire Chief Pazan, Assistant Fire Chief Matheson, and Deputy Fire Chief Fritz, as well as the entire Exeter Fire Department, who worked around the clock for many days last week addressing the brush fire that we had on the border of Exeter and Brentwood. It was through their leadership and the dedication of our entire Fire Department that they were able to remedy that. I'd also like to sincerely give our thanks and gratitude and recognize all of the other towns who sent departments for mutual aid. And we're very grateful for that. So I just wanted to lead off with that. At this time, I open it up to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with any comment they'd like to make to the Select Board. We do ask, though, that if your comment is relative to an agenda item, you wait until that agenda item comes up. I'll pause. And there's no one online. So with that, I will turn this over to Chief Poole. And we have two swearing-ins this evening. We have our Town Clerk, Andy Kohler, here. We have Officer Michael Lino and Officer Adam Hurlbert this evening. So Chief Poole, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron.
Aaron, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Select Board and town officials that are here, family and friends. This really is for you. So make sure it's gonna go quick. So take all the pictures you can. And then later on, we can go downstairs and get more pictures. So it's also something that the town, you know, really enjoys having you all here to be a part of this. We're here to see two officers get sworn in, our newest officers. Officer Michael Lino comes to us with no police experience, but he's from a police family. And he was an automotive technician who decided to pursue his long fulfilled dream of being a police officer. And then Officer Aaron Hurlbert comes to us with three years of prior police experience, one from a neighboring town, but wanted to come here, be a part of this community, and be a part of our police department. So very fantastic to have these two join us. They actually started working at the end of October. And they've been in field training since. Very, very good officers, and we're excited to have them. They're gonna be pinned on after their oath by their wives. And at this time, we'll invite them up to get their oath.
Wave your right hand, and repeat after me. I.
I.
Please state your name.
Michael Lino.
Aaron Hurlbert.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will bear faithful.
That I will bear faithful.
And true allegiance.
And true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
Please state your names.
Michael Lino.
Aaron Hurlbert.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As police officers.
As police officers.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And enforce the laws.
And enforce the laws.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, both of you.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, welcome aboard. Yeah, thanks.
Have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Always a nice way to start the meeting.
It is.
It's something we've started a couple, a couple of years now with both police and fire. And I know it's, it's important for me to meet the officers and see the swearing-in. And it's good for folks at home and those here to see our new officers. So.
Great to see.
Happy that Chief Poole started that. So many thanks. Our next item on the agenda is to review the regular meeting minutes of November 12, 2024. I'd ask if there are any amendments or revisions.
I did find one.
Please.
We kind of did a joint interview with Jim Breeling and Julie Gaunt for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And so it was not apparent on the video. I'm sure that we were also interviewing Julie Gaunt. So if we could add a "C", Julie Gaunt, for the Sustainability Advisory Committee, I would, I would offer that amendment.
Thank you. Any others?
No. I'll second Dan's motion.
Okay. Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of November 12, 2024 as amended.
Some moved.
Some moved.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 3-0. Thank you. We have one appointment to take up this evening. There's a opening on the Pear Point Park Committee with the resignation of Judy Rowan that the Board accepted at our last meeting. The Pear Point Park Committee met last Thursday and have recommended to the Select Board that alternate Bill Campbell be appointed as a regular voting member. And if there is no discussion or question on that, I would entertain a motion to appoint alternate Bill Campbell as a regular voting member of the Pear Point Park Committee. There is no term limit?
Some moved.
And I will second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. So we'll jump right into our discussion items this evening. Introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Corey Stevens, who will introduce the auditors. They're gonna talk about the financial audit. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Tonight, we have with us representatives from Plodzik and Sanderson, our public accounting firm. On your left, or your right, sorry, is Cheryl Pratt. She is a director and shareholder with the firm. And on your left is Ashley Miller Clem, who is a senior manager. Ashley was our main point of contact during the audit, field work and beyond. Plodzik and Sanderson and the town renewed their relationship this year as Plodzik and Sanderson was the town's public accountant during the early 2000s. We were excited to have them back. This being a first-year audit, Plodzik and Sanderson brought a fresh set of eyes to our financials and our process and sort of pulled back the sheets on many of our procedures and processes, and which you'll hear about this evening. During a first-year audit, there tends to be findings and things that they'd like to see us clean up. So whether you hear from them tonight, you will be hearing from me and my team here over the coming months as we look to clean up some of those items.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Yeah, I want to start by actually thanking Mr. Stevens and his staff for helping us because I was over here two or three days. And they were very helpful in trying to get this audit done. And it was very smooth. Whenever we needed information, we got it. And that's very important when we're trying to do an audit. So that was full, and we really appreciated the questions and the input or asking us questions. We always say, please, you know, ask questions. So we welcome those. And that helps not only you, but it helps us in, in going through an audit. So thank you very much. On pages 1 through 3 of the report is your opinion letter. And this is based on all our work. We perform all kinds of tests, various tests, haphazard samples we pull. We pull random samples. We do a lot of detailed testing. And based on all of the testing we perform on your financial statements is how we determine whether we can render a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion or another type of an opinion which isn't as good. It's not the best opinion you can receive. Based on all our testing that we performed, we were able to render a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the town for the year ending December 31, 2023. And in the opinion, it's every, it's always evolving. But I also want to make, draw your attention to the emphasis of matter. Whenever there's a counting pronouncement that changes, we will bring that to the forefront in the opinion letter and let you know whether or not it modifies the opinion. And it did not. It was based on the new, there was two accounting principles that came to light, GASB 87 and 96, revolving around leases. This one was more of technology-based leases, which had no bearing or impact on your financials for the given year. Also in the back of the report are two additional opinions, which are also unmodified opinions. And they're based on an audit of your federal financial statements. Because you receive and expend over $750,000 in a given year, you are required to go through what we call is a single audit in accordance with uniform guidance. There are 14 general requirements that we have to test depending on the type of federal program that we have to deter, we have to perform the testing on. So that also, your single audit also received an unmodified opinion. And those opinion letters can be found in the back of the report. On page 15 is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. We have to make a determination, and it is approved by the town, by Mr. Stevens, what is determined to be major and non-major funds. The general fund of the town, which is your operating fund, is always considered major. We also determined this year that the Capital Projects Fund was another major fund. The other governmental funds are all your remaining funds that did not meet the criteria of a major fund. We have to do a calculation to determine what is major and what isn't. And the detail for those other governmental funds can be found on Schedule 4 of the report or back on Pages 68 and 69 of the report. So we always find the, the schedules in the back of the report are considered supplementary information. It's not required, but we as a firm have always believed in providing those statements because they do give you that information that you need. So ever since, and I've been doing this a long time, and that's always been one thing that we pride ourselves on, that we provide you that information. So the general fund for the end of December 31, 2023 had a total fund balance of $5,763,840. That can be found, the detail for that can be found in Note 19 on Pages 51 through 52. So again, the notes are key to the numbers in the financial statements. If you want to know what makes up something, you go to those notes applicable to the area that you're looking for. So the fund balance can be detailed. What makes each up, each piece of a, a component of the fund balance on those pages. And for example, the, because of GASB 54, it requires that if a fund is substantially funded by another fund, you blend that fund with where the money is coming from. So the expendable trust funds, because they are funded substantially by appropriations from the general fund, get blended for reporting purposes in this report. So under the committed fund balance, the expendable trust money is reported as committed in the general fund and is also reported in the general fund on C1 under, under the cash as well. Further back in the report are, again, those supplementary schedules, are Schedules 1, 2, and 3. And they detail what make, what your budget versus actual looks like for your revenues, your appropriations, and then the overall impact on the unassigned fund balance at year end. On Page 66, Schedule 3, you'll note that you started the year with unassigned fund balance, as restated, of a total of $4,738,660. From that number, you used $300,000 to reduce the tax rate. And then there were amounts voted from fund balance to fund trust funds of $1,861,319. From those Schedules 1 and 2 I mentioned, the overall budget surplus for the year was $1,016,215. And then because of the decrease in restricted fund balance for the year, we had a, it was at, that $1,655,746 was added back to your unassigned fund balance to give you a new budget, non-GAAP budgetary basis fund balance or the fund balance you use to read, to look at when you're looking at reducing your tax rate of $5,249,302. And then, and again, in the very back are the single audit opinions. And on Page 78 and 79 is the schedule of expenditure of federal awards, which shows what you received from what agency and what grant you received, and the total expenditures, which totaled $2,168,586. So that is the report in a nutshell. There were no findings. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is, is very good. I can't always say that when I go out and do meetings. But you had none, and you can, it is witnessed or evidenced on Page 77. Under the schedule of findings and questioned costs related to the single audit, we have to report them as such. And there were none. The other thing we do prepare is a governance letter. And that is where we will lay out areas that we consider they're not significant or material weaknesses, but they're matters that you should consider to help the efficiencies of the town and the finance department. We did have comments there, and I think, for the most part, they were mainly related to policy. And Mr. Stevens responded to those findings in the report with responses. And based on that, most of those he's working on or is, has already corrected some of those other matters. So that is always nice to see. Unfortunately, where we, when we go to some towns, those appear repeatedly. But I'm pleased to say that he's already taken action on, on most of those. So that was good to see. So with that, are there any questions that you may have? I don't really have any at this point.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Your highlighting the fact that Mr. Stevens and his department are responsive and inquisitive meets exactly my experience with them as well. They're one of our best departments. So thank you for affirming that.
Oh, you're welcome.
And thank you for your work and for your report.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I agree with, with what Selectman Shartran said. And I want to thank you for the time that you both took to come out and work with our team and put together this audit and put together the report. It's very useful for the Select Board, and we appreciate you coming out this evening. You sort of alluded to it in your closing, and I don't need to get into specifics, but I'm just interested, how do, how does the town of Exeter compare to some of the other towns that you audit that are roughly the same size?
In terms of just overall audit comments, do you mean?
Yeah, things, things that we're doing well, things we could be doing better, just the whole overall. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I know that you've met with Mr. Stevens about some, some improvements we could make. But, you know, anything else that you see from other towns that maybe we're doing quite well or we could be doing better? Just maybe some examples if, without putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think to echo what Cheryl said, I, I do think that your finance department here, like you mentioned, is on top of things. They're attempting to make improvements, which is, you know, core number one. So that's a good thing to have going. We talked to Corey quite a bit about all the questions that he has, you know, and I feel like we have a good, you know, back and forth of that and that the questions that he's asking us are good questions and important questions. And we don't always know all the answers either. Sometimes I'm like, oh, that's a really good question, actually. So no one's asked me that before. So I do think that there are some things that are do, that you're doing really well. In this letter are the things that we sort of pointed out that, you know, I wouldn't say you're doing wrong, but just things that we think you could improve upon, particularly like the policies, like Cheryl mentioned. You know, something that jumps to mind was the ambulance write-off process, right? So we see that, and a lot of towns don't have those, unfortunately. So I think that's already been taken action upon. So, you know, just being responsive to those sort of suggestions, I think, is the biggest thing. And like Cheryl mentioned, we don't always get that kind of response. So.
Terrific. Thank you.
And one thing, too, I want to add is that with cybersecurity, that was one of the comments. And I don't know if you've been watching the news, but there have been a lot of, and some have not even made the news. But that's an area that's really important to look at, is making sure you have controls in place for preventing cyber attacks. We know of several, I know of at least six entities, governmental units, that have been attacked. And one of them was held hostage. And because the ransom was not paid, the, the bad actor deleted the files of the financial records of that entity. So that's one thing that really we're starting to focus on as well. So Mr. Stevens will be seeing a new questionnaire in the next cycle when we start the audit. We've got some additional questions we're gonna be asking and probably maybe a follow-up comment. Because it's important to you, you can't, you know, be losing that information.
I appreciate you being proactive in that regard. In my day job, I sort of touch upon that with municipalities in another state. So the fact that you're being proactive with Mr. Stevens, and I know with our IT department, they're being very proactive, it's crucial because it's only gonna get worse. So thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate that.
I just want to thank you for your work. And it's nice to hear how well our finance department is doing. I'm not surprised, but it's still nice to hear in the audit. So thank you for your time. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you. You as well.
So for our next two agenda items, we're going to call Mr. Stevens back up to the to the microphone. Finance Director is going to give us an update on the 20 next one, sorry. He's going to give us an update on the valuations.
Before he does, can I say thank you and well done on your audit? For you and your department.
You're welcome. They it couldn't have gone better for us in terms of what our expectation was for our new firm in. They were proactive. There was no chasing. It was it was really good. So we're excited about the relationship. You know, they didn't expand too much on the items that we have to work on. So I think they're significant in that we need to deal with them. They're not significant in terms of their nomenclature and what they would mean by significant, but we are working on them. It'll it'll take some time, but but it was great. It was great to have a new set of eyes on things.
Yeah, good.
Thank you for being responsive and open-minded to their suggestions.
Absolutely. Okay, well, as you all know, as residents and taxpayers as well, our second installment property tax bills went out last Monday, the 18th. And I believe they hit mailboxes by Thursday or Friday. Staff down in tax and assessing, and myself, have been extremely busy the past few days, fielding calls, responding to emails about residents from residents over their new assessments and their tax liability. Many property owners saw a fairly significant rise in their value as a result of the revaluation, and they understandably have questions. So we've been there to answer them for folks. Based on the conversations I've had with residents and the emails I've responded to, the town manager and I thought it might be helpful to sort of come back up and go over the talking points we went over in our video from the summer in anticipation that folks might like to understand a little bit more. I thought we might have a bit more of an audience this evening. Maybe that'll be next week, but hopefully people will either look at the packet or hear this conversation. So I put a memo together, and it was in the packet. And I thought I would just kind of read through it because it is kind of meaty. But it does kind of lay out sort of the whys of the revow and what it means for residents and, quite honestly, what they can do if they're not satisfied with what they're seeing or have questions about it. So, you know, why do we do a revaluation anyways? The state of New Hampshire requires that every five years, cities and towns conduct a revaluation. And the purpose of the revaluation is to update all assessments in town to current market rates. The state is interested in ensuring that the local tax the local property tax burden is shared among property owners fairly. And the way they do that is to make all make sure that all properties are as close to fair market value as possible. As we know, the real estate market on the seacoast and in Exeter has changed significantly since the last revaluation in 2019. Market values have increased dramatically during that time, and we see that in the new valuation numbers. The average value increase through the revaluation was 55%. And some of our mobile home, and I think the mobile home properties went up as much as 146%. So it was all over the place, and some more significant than others. And that 146 represents the fact that these represent some of our most affordable and starter, and in some cases, starter homes. So it's not surprising to see this set of properties going up like they did. So what was the result of the reassessment? The increase in the property assessments resulted in a decrease in the town's property rate. If you recall, Exeter's 2023 tax rate was $26.78,000, while the 2024 rate dropped to $17.79,000. It's almost a $9 drop. The decrease in the rate, as a result of the increase in property values, importantly, ensures that the town collects no more in taxes than what was approved by voters back in March. And this is an important piece. Some of the other, some of the anecdotal here is, well, my my value went up and my bill's going up, so the town must be able to collect more. Where is all the money going? And that's just not the case. The voters decide how much we're going to collect by what they vote on in March. And then the state sets our rate according to what the voters have said they want to spend on and our values. That's an equation that doesn't change, and certainly how much we collect doesn't change. So the question is, well, why did some property owners see a decrease in their their property bill? Why did some see an increase? And why did some see, you know, order of magnitude so large of an increase in their bill? There's, you know, sort of two reasons for this. First of all, appropriations that voters voted on in March of 2024 were higher than they were in 2023, i.e., our budget and our costs went up. That happens every year to some extent. The second component, and more significantly in a revaluation year, is that revised assessments create a shift in the cost share between us. If you think of our budget as a pie, each of us pays a certain amount. When we get a revaluation, that relationship and that that sharing changes. So back to the 146% increase in mobile home properties, what we see is that mobile homes are going to share more of that pie than they did in the past or the past reevaluation. And that is what changes the most significantly during a revaluation, that shift in what each of us is paying in relation to others. So all that to be said, you know, residents are still going to have questions and question the accuracy of their assessment. It's natural to do. What I would recommend is when you get your property tax bill, the first thing to do is confirm that the data is accurate. Our town assessing website has a wealth of information about each property, pictures of your property, each floor, the space, what goes into it. If you have any question about that or question the data there, certainly raise it with the assessor's office. The second thing to do is just do a sort of an armchair review of properties that like yours that sold in your neighborhood or in the community. If you're seeing that similar properties to yours sold at rates much lower than you're valued at, then there may be something there to challenge. If you're seeing that you're kind of in line, then you probably get a sense that your property is fairly valued. If residents do disagree with their assessment, they can appeal it through the abatement process. Abatement applications, among other applications for exemptions and credits, deferrals can all be found down in the assessor's office or on the assessor's website. And those abatement applications, if a resident decided to pursue one, are due by March 1 of 2025. One thing I'll say is, if you have an inkling to go out and abate, do not not pay your bill. You want to avoid interest, late fees, and penalties. And essentially, we'll catch up with you. If you get an abatement, you will get a credit on your account or you'll get a refund when the abatement is is approved. The one thing, one thing I noticed, I haven't hadn't done this, I don't think, in the past admittedly, is to turn my property tax bill over and look at all the information that sits on the back of it. It tells you all of the different tax relief options there are for you and when applications for those are due. It goes over how to file an abatement and then tells you which department within the town to go to to seek relief. And that's it. I hope I hope folks get a chance to listen to this or come in and ask questions. I've had some good exchanges via email with residents, and they seem to understand, or at least understand, you know, what was happening once we did speak.
I was studying my bill that I just received over the weekend. And I noticed that there's two elements to the tax bill. There's the the valuation of the building, and then there's the valuation of the property under the building. And I have to go back and look, but I suspect that a lot of the valuation increase for me personally was on the property under the building. And could that be the reason? That would tend to be more uniform across the town, I would think, whereas buildings are, you know, have different values depending on how many features they have. The property would, I would suspect, and I'm asking you, this is the question, that tends to be more uniform across the town. And therefore, that would raise some people's valuation in relation to other properties.
Yeah, I think I would defer to the the assessor's office on that. But what I will say is, when I did my own look at J.D. Hill to see, you know, how I compared to others, because you do it naturally. And what do you mean, my property is, you know, worth less than theirs, blah, blah, blah? But then I noticed that land plays a big part of it. Oh, they've got a bigger lot than I do. I notice that time and time again, actually.
Right.
So I think your suspicion is right.
So you can't just think about your building. You also need to think about the amount of land. And the fact that that might be fairly uniform across the town as opposed to different housing styles that that might be worth more in the market. I suspect that might be part of what's at play here. And if you think about it, that makes sense. Anyway.
I have a question about the video that you referenced earlier. Did people say they did see it or didn't see it, did anyone? Did you get a sense of how effective the video was in trying to?
I heard from I heard from the folks who said, you said this in the video.
Okay.
Right, so one of the things we did, so yes, I think people, people that I looked on the community forum, people referenced the video.
Okay.
One thing, and since you brought it up, is we noted in the video that if your property roughly changed around, increased in value around 60%, that you would, you know, essentially see no increase as a result of the revaluation process. And while the data at the time reflected a 60% average, when the final values came out after the work that MRI did in the latter part of September and October, that average dropped to 55%. And then when you put the budget impact, which we didn't talk about in the video, on top of that, what we're seeing is somewhere between 49% and 51% is where that sort of sweet spot of you wouldn't have seen an increase in your bill. It's about level. So there was things in, and that's how I knew people saw it because they brought up, you know, areas we might have, they were confused about.
Okay, thank you. One more question, if you may. Not only is it every five years, there's a lot, but there's also a percentage threshold, if that's the right way of putting it. Can you tell me what that is on the on the market?
The where we're supposed to be is between 90% and 110% of market.
Thank you.
And I know the board has been aware, we as we've been discussing over the last several years, that we've been down around 70, 60, as low as 67% at the low point. So we had a lot of ground to make up on the assessments.
Right, yeah. I just think that's another, just another measurement for people to understand that we're not going out and reassessing people. We have a lot to follow on that. And unfortunately, sales of mobile homes, that's a big hit for people. But they're the next ones that are just selling at such a high price compared to what they used to, right? Condos and mobile homes, do I have that right?
There is no easy answer for
There isn't.
for that profile of property.
No. It's mark, it's fair market value, right? It's, okay, thank you.
Well, the idea is you would get as close to market as
Right, what it's selling for.
I think I'm Ryan even alluded to that even as of the the end of their work, we were still like in the mid 90s, right?
Right, right around 95%.
Continue to move.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, a comment, and a couple suggestions, possibly more, I think, for Mr. Dean, but also for you. But I'd like to yield and open it up to the public if anybody has any questions or comments that they'd like to make. Step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Select Board. My name is Nicholas Metz, 1 Tilton Avenue here in Exeter. Thank you very much for the explanation. I did see the video. And that 60% target was kind of where I had watched. I I don't plead to be an expert at it, but I do try to counsel other neighbors and friends and family that have concerns that all of this is just a big perplexing drive. Now, I saw a substantial increase, even though I sat at the original projected 60%, you know, value increase. But, you know, I saw close to a 20% increase in my taxes year over last. No, I get it. So, I mean, the sweet spot dropped, you know, 49 to 51%. It helps for that information to come out. We don't live on large, you know, in our neighborhood, it's not a lot of property. So I really feel that a lot of that revaluation came to the dwellings themselves. So Dan, I appreciate your approach to that because I really wondered where the land to dwelling concept came because you see an adverse to the manufactured homes and the condos that really don't sit on property, per se. It really is just a dwelling increase over 100%. That's that's astronomical. And then we discuss, you know, the March vote and the increase there. And I don't know if this comes back to, you know, what what Mr. Dean's capable of doing or if there is a breakdown, especially during these substantial increases in the revaluation, more so than anything, is how much is the the increase in burden, even if it's a percentage? What did we vote on? And what is redistribution as a whole? Again, averages help because it's all Greek, and it's a lot of moving parts for a lot of people that just, I mean, again, the fixed income and the the whole drive with that, I can appreciate it. You know, seeing a 20% increase on my tax isn't going to be enough to sink the ship, but it's definitely going to involve, you know, rebudgeting. You know, I mean, there's definitely, you know, my mortgage company is going to have something to say to me. So that's all. I appreciate, you know, your time in explaining it further because I have been following right along, and I'm still following along because it is not 100% clear. But yeah, and one last, as far as residential over commercial, is there any way we can show what the valuation averages? Or is that published somewhere that we can get as far as seeing what, you know, commercial properties revaluation compared to the residential side of things are, is?
37% was the commercial number as far as the increase.
Of valuation, or it went up?
It went up 37%.
But still well below the the 49 sweet spot. So if anything, commercial properties probably saw a decrease in their taxes, whereas residential saw saw the increases of Brent.
Depending on value, it depends on the value of the property, but that could be correct.
But overall, commercial property saw a 37% increase. So they're below that sweet spot.
Yes.
So overall, the commercial real estate sector saw a decrease in tax. I hate the word burden. I always say obligation.
Oh, my wife hates it too, but I mean, I didn't, unfortunately. Living in finances
Your burden is my obligation.
contracts, yeah, you don't know what else to do with it.
So so I'm understanding that correctly.
I'd like to answer that at a at another meeting, just to make sure that that's accurate. But the value of increase is definitely 37% across the board for commercial property.
Thank you. So in just to be clear, so there's we've talked in a few different percentages here. So if 37% is the commercial, residential was actually 60%, okay? The overall town average was 55%. But then when I layer in the budget factor, which you touched on, and that's how you get down to your sweet spot of the 49 to 51. So to your point, lots of moving parts.
Yeah. That's a great question, though.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you for asking.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you.
And it's probably worth noting, Mr. Chair, that town taxes, with the amount that we raised in the levy, increased 4.2% year over year. So that's just a statistic that I wanted to make sure was on the table for tonight.
Based on what the voters decided.
That's correct.
4.2%.
4.2%.
But there's that moving part.
Another one.
Yeah, another percentage. It's it's complex, no doubt. I appreciate your comments, Nicholas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay.
I'm happy to come, I guess I planned on it for the rest of the year, to these meetings, just in case, you know, I could
You were coming back anyway.
Yeah, I'm not getting
I think that's a great
I could see more folks coming out in another meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Dean, I think for the foreseeable, well, foreseeable future, at least through the end of the year and it did
at least through the end of the year and into January, much like we did with the Siphon Project, maybe just having Mr. Stevens as a placeholder on the agenda. If he has any additional information, if there are folks that want to come and ask questions, that was very useful during the Siphon Project. Not that this is the same, but I think, to your point, Mr. Stevens, having you here and available, whether it's five minutes or a half hour, whatever the folks need. My question was, your advice, which I agree with, that if you question your bill, if you want to try to abate your bill, you suggest it to folks to make sure they pay their bill and then continue to appeal it. If folks can't cover the entire bill, and this can go to either you or Mr. Dean, who in town can they reach out to to talk about the fact that they want to meet their obligation or their burden, but they're having difficulties? Is there a way that they can communicate? And with whom would they do that?
So they would communicate that to the assessing office. That's where they would start that process and review of our exemption and credit programs and see if they fit under any of those umbrellas. And if they don't fit under any of those umbrellas, the tax office will do a payment plan with people if need be. It's a case-by-case basis, and it's based on need and expression of need. But they can do that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. So I would encourage folks that are listening at home, you know, if, as Mr. Stevens said, even if you're questioning your bill, make sure it's paid on time so you don't accrue any interest or fees. If you have, if you're in a situation where the burden's too high, there are folks here that can help you. They can, at least, at the very least, listen, but also be able to try to guide you in a direction that, you know, help meet that burden. So that was my question, and then, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's important to note, too, that just because you're in a payment plan on something like property taxes, it doesn't stop the leaning process. So that actually can't be halted. So people should know, even if you're in a payment plan situation, there still can be liens put upon the property if the bill's not fully paid.
And for anybody that is able to, has a computer, can get online, is savvy that way, to go to the assessor's site, because Janet has really well described all of the exemptions, credits, deferrals, length, and eligibility, which is also important, and also applicability, like not everything is applicable to the current bill. Some of it is, you know, future bills. So if you're looking for immediate relief, that's a certain, you know, group of things. And if you're looking for future, that's another. And you also have to qualify for age and all those sorts of things. So a little bit of education before you show up to the assessor's office, if you can, would be helpful to you.
Okay. So I guess the point we want to make is that we have folks here that can listen. We have folks that can answer questions. We have folks that can try to help. And then how do we communicate that? You know, we talked about, we did the video earlier on that had a lot of hits. There were a lot of moving parts, and there were some of that video that became a little outdated. But if we could utilize our website, Mr. Dean, to, so that folks can easily find who and where they can contact and get their questions answered. If we could additionally work on, you know, we have a Town of Exeter Facebook page. If we can communicate that way, if we could reach out to our Exeter TV folks and as part of their newsletter, they can work with you and Mr. Stevens and Assistant Town Manager Roy to get the message out that way. And then consider, you know, if we want to do another quick video, just to give folks that information. I just want people to understand that there are people that they can speak with to answer questions that potentially can help. And I just want to get the message out as to how they can go about doing that.
Correct.
And it's not going to be 100%, unfortunately, with, you know, our limitations in communication. But I think we have enough avenues that we could try to reach as many people as possible. And then just educate them on the process and on the bill and try to help as much as we can.
I like that idea, Mr. Chair. We need to be very clear that the town is not a brick wall when it comes to this issue. We understand that this is a large shift for many and a huge shift for some. And we are here to work with you. There's laws that define how we will work with you. But we are not oblivious to what this shift means to some folks.
Absolutely.
So I agree that we should have this on the agenda as a placeholder going forward for anyone that wants to come to our meetings and talk about this more or talk through it with us. That's part of our obligation as the executive body of this town.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard.
We're not a brick wall.
But we're not a brick wall. And we want to help folks as much as we can. As you said, there are laws. You know, this is obviously not exclusive to the Town of Exeter. It's an obligation that we have to do every five years from the state. And, but we're here to listen, and we're here to help as we can.
And I just want to stress what Corey suggested about going to the website of the town clerk, not the clerk, the assessor's office. Just because if you read through the information, you've got the language, right? And that way, anything you're confused about, then at least you have a little bit of information before you walk in to talk to Janet.
Yeah, it can be a great source of question.
Absolutely, it does help as a starting point.
And I'd just like to, I'll just close with anecdotally. I know I've talked with you, Mr. Stevens, I talked to Mr. Dean, and, you know, there are some folks that took a really big hit. And it's stressful, it's frightening, it can cause anxiety. But anecdotally, from what I've heard from both of you, is that folks that have come in here have been respectful, they've been civil, understandably upset, but have come in here with, you know, I need some questions answered and just have been very willing to sit down with staff and have been patient. I guess that's the word I'm looking for. So I'm appreciative of folks coming in and acting that way. And I know how well the staff works with our citizens. So I look forward to that continuing.
Yeah, it's, you know, it can be hard for staff not to, it can be hard for staff, person after person.
Sure.
You know, it's like town clerk all year, right? I mean, people come in and you, it can wear on them. But we're here for it, that we understand it. We don't, we're not looking for people to not come and invent, but understanding is definitely key.
Great. Thank you, and then thank you for your anticipated presentations in the future.
Yep, no problem.
Before we move on, is there any other comment from the public? Great, thank you, Nick, thanks again for your questions. So Mr. Stevens, your next agenda item.
Right, the hits just keep coming. So my second item is to speak with you about an item that Mr. Dean, I believe, has mentioned, which is the 27th pay date in FY '25. The background, I know he's kind of given you some in the past. Essentially, every 11 years, the town has a 27th pay date, where typically, as a biweekly payer or employer, we have 26. It just so happens that the first payday of 2025 falls on the first day of the year, which allows for the last pay to be on the very last day of the year. And in there, you crunch in 27 pays. We're not paying anybody more, well, we are paying them more times, but we're paying every two weeks. And it just happens that you can fit 27 of them into FY '25. But it does present a challenge for the budget, because we budgeted, and that's on me, for 26 pays, not thinking that every 11 years, there's a 27th. So a little bit of education there. So we need to deal with it. So in front of you is a memo. We've looked at various ways to deal with the issue. And we've presented essentially three options that we consider to be the most viable for your consideration. What I would say is that in approaching this issue, and the reason we're coming to you after the BRC work, is that we're separating the approaches for hourly staff and salaried staff into sort of two buckets. One silver lining to all of the open positions we've had that we've been talking about this year is that it's created some budget space that will allow us to pay our hourly folks in 2024, on December 31st, and therefore not have to budget for them in 2025. So January 1st is a Wednesday, that's supposed to be our payday. If we back to December 31st, which is a Tuesday, we can pay our hourly folks, and then we'll pay our salaried folks later in the week. And that's all a function of having some bandwidth here this year from the open positions. So that's how we've approached it. So the options that you see below are merely to deal with the budgetary impact in 2025 of salaried staff in that 27th pay.
And this is non-union employees, correct?
This is non-union, correct. So the first option, so for a little bit of background, our budgets this year have, and every year have a step, typically, a step and a COLA in them. Our wage grade right now for the non-unions is set up for a 2% COLA and a 3% step. So there was a 5% wage increase built into the FY '25 budget. In option one, we're presenting to give employees a 2% cost of living increase and then pay them the 27th pay. That comes out to an estimated budget impact of $155,000 across General Fund, Water and Sewer, with the breakdown, as I show, $128,000 for General Fund and $27,000 for Water and Sewer. And that includes wages, taxes, and retirement costs. To the General Fund, that would be a year-over-year budget increase change from 5.7%, which is where it sits after the BRC work, to 6.2% when we add in the $128,000. We are also looking at cutbacks to the FY 2020 budget. Right now, we've identified about $20,000. If that were to come to fruition, it ends up being about a half a percent increase in the overall FY '25, I'm sorry, increase from 5.7 to 6.2. If we incorporate the $20,000 of cutbacks, it's less than a half a percent increase off the 5.7, the impact of the 27th wages, sorry.
No, and it's important, thank you for saying that. And it's important to note that those percentages are, as of right now, with what the Budget Recommendations Committee has recommended. The Select Board has yet to vet the budget.
That's right.
And we still have the budget hearing in January. So that number, I just want to be clear with folks at home, that number could change.
Quick question. On option one, if I'm understanding correctly, I'm kind of restating it, so I make sure I understand. This scenario, option one, includes $20,000 in cutbacks?
It does not include in there. This is the gross cost, but we have identified 20,000. So the 128 could come to 108.
So it would reduce the 6.2% slight.
That is correct, yes. I didn't plug it in because at the bottom, we talked a little bit about the funding options. So I left out any effect of a reduction.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, thank you.
So I think to that point, too, thank you for asking that question. To that point, when the board feels ready to make a motion, the motion should include the options, but not the numbers, particularly because those could change the more you may identify.
That's right.
Some cuts, correct, Mr. Dean?
Correct.
Thank you. Go ahead, Corey. Oh, did you have a question?
I just had one. You said, there's been $20,000 in cuts identified. Are you at the end of that process? Or are you just still looking at it?
We've been, we may be a little bit at the end of it. We've done this exercise several times of going down.
Yeah, no, I figured, I just wanted to clarify whether it was the beginning, the middle, or you've done all the cuts you can find and?
We feel like we've made the reductions we can make at this point.
Or we proposed to make, I guess.
Yes, absolutely.
What we'd recommend.
Still honor the work of the Budget Recommendation Committee.
Correct.
Yeah, we look, there are things we could do, but that would fly in the face of what they did. And I don't think that would be in good spirit.
No, thank you, I agree with that.
So option two would be to essentially eliminate the COLA and just pay the 27th pay to the non-union salaried folks. Estimated budget impact is $90,000 overall across the three funds. General Fund, it would be $72,000. $52,000 after you incorporated the $20,000 of reductions. Water, Sewer would be $18,000. This would mean a General Fund year-over-year budget increase from 5.7 to 6.0. And then the third option would be to maintain the increases currently in the FY '25 budget, the 5%, but divide the wages by 27 pays. So if I'm a salaried person and I make 75 a year, just because we've paid you 26 times in the past doesn't mean that that's true every year. This is the theory, at least. We're going to pay you 27 times, and it just reduces your salary that much each pay period. And I've kind of shown some high levels. So for a $75,000 employee, they'd see a reduction of $70 at the mid-year, because we do our increases as of July. So a $70 reduction in pay come July. A $60,000 employee would see a $55 reduction. That should be noted that we have significant healthcare increases in FY '25, which will take effect January 1. So if we take that person who's a $60,000 a year, a $55 reduction at mid-year, if they're on a family plan, that's $37 a pay period that they will see, they're going to see anyway as a reduction. So now you're $55, $65, $55, $92. Just to give you the full picture.
And for those watching tonight that maybe didn't tune into the Budget Recommendations Committee meetings, the health increase this year was significant.
It was, 18.7%.
Almost 19%.
That's right, yep. So those are the three, you know, options we came up with. They all have, they all have impacts as you think out across the FY '25 budget and the FY '26 budget. That, you know, I won't bore you with the details. There's just, we thought a lot about what the impact's going to be to employees and the budgets going into the second year, FY '26. So for example, by, if we were to choose option two, we're in eliminate the COLA, we're essentially freezing folks' employees, sorry, wages at FY '24 levels. So when they, and if they, we implement COLAs in steps in FY '26, they're starting from that FY '24 level. So in that option, because of the significance of the 27th pay, a person in 2025 going into 2026 at a $75,000 pay would see about a $1,000 reduction over the year, FY '25 to FY '26, in their pay by not doing any COLA in FY '25. And then that drops, if you, in comparison, out of fairness, if you go to option one with the 2%, that drops to about $200 reduction. It's not completely gone because of the significance of the 27th pay. But it's minimized if we keep some sort of cost of living adjustment in FY '25. So there's just lots of pieces to it.
So the impact on '26 would be mitigated under option three, correct?
Well, that's true.
Because the increases would be maintained.
That's right.
Not that I'm arguing for a particular option, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, it is true.
So that issue of the basis being reduced going forward is not applicable to option three?
Correct.
Thank you.
The reduction is the applicable, you know, the reduction in, you're kind of going to weave through 2025.
So it's a bit of a haircut in 25, but it doesn't impact your basis in 26 under option three?
Correct.
And again, I'm not arguing for it, just making sure I understand. The thing that you're talking about at the moment.
That's right.
Is not, option three does not have that feature.
Correct.
But repeat, to that point too, repeat if you would. In option three, folks would be receiving less than their paycheck per paycheck. They're not losing their salary per se.
Correct.
They're just, so if they're budgeting, if they're used to getting, as you pointed out here, and they get a $70 reduction per pay period.
That's right.
Then that's something that they'll have to adjust in their daily budgeting.
That's right.
But going forward, they'll still be getting their step and their COLA, and so it won't impact their basis going forward.
It's that in FY25, you'd be maintaining that step and COLA, right? It would just be, and essentially in option three, you're made whole, if you will, and by the end of the year, you're getting your full pay, it's just spread out over, right?
Which could be impactful for some folks.
Well, you know, someone pointed out to me, you know, it's $70 less when I go to the grocery store. And I don't, I hesitated to say that based on the last conversation we had. I mean, I'm not deaf to the fact that everybody has got some pain right now, but that is...
The last conversation being the taxes.
The taxes, yeah.
But this is someone's paycheck.
Thank you for making that.
Right.
Because that is there.
It is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, but this is someone's actual paycheck, so.
Yes.
And we just went through a lot of a process of reclassification and because we were, our pay scale was so low, weighing that in my mind right now.
So that brings up, is there?
Yeah, of course.
That brings up something that I don't expect an answer to tonight, but the question, we've put a lot of time and effort into retaining and finding employees for empty slots. Which of these options nicks and dings our retention efforts the least?
Of the ones?
And I don't know if you can answer that question.
The least.
The least.
Because we've spent a lot of time and money trying to retain and find new employees. And this could impact that. And so where do we do the least amount of harm on that front? And I don't expect an answer to that tonight.
I don't think we can answer it.
We have one.
I think we can get that answer right now.
Oh, great.
Yeah. We've had a lot of discussion about this at the executive team level, and the feeling we have is that option one is the one that presents the least amount of disruption, if you will, to the employee base and threatens any kind of progress we've made on recruitment and retention.
But can you, and can you explain why?
Because it maintains the COLA. That's one of the big reasons is that you're not, as Corey pointed out very, very well, you, if you don't include a COLA in the 25 budget, you're essentially freezing that pay grid from FY24 to FY26, which is a two-year window. So people will be behind in 2026 going into that year. That's actually the largest reason.
But option three also has that feature.
It does, but in conversing just about the practical impact on people's checks, that came into play as well as the health insurance.
Yeah. Well, the health insurance is a given.
Yep.
There's nothing we can do about that.
It's, it's a fixed cost that impacts both the town and the employee.
Yeah.
When we started out, when we first started talking about this about a month ago, I was pretty convinced that we're going to divide by 27 and that's just going to be the answer. But when you start canvassing what other communities are doing.
Thank you.
And interestingly, I canvassed a private employer that I used to work for because I was pretty sure we would have never paid the 27th, but we couldn't find anybody that wasn't paying the 27th. So I think we, you know, it's an option, but I'm not sure it's one that is prevalent out there. I think...
If I could just, because you didn't give yourself enough credit, so I'm going to give you some credit because I've been involved in this process with the E-Team. And from the very get-go, Mr. Stevens reached out to the NHMA, he reached out to legal counsel, he reached out to surrounding towns, towns that have comparable size, and then also to the private sector. So when he, when he came to the E-Team, you know, at the very beginning, you know, with how they came about putting these three options together, he'd done that homework. So I really want to give him credit for doing that because it's important to see what other, as we're trying to retain employees and we're trying to do the right thing and not break the bank, it's, I think it's important to see what other neighboring communities are doing.
Right, to Corey's point, we have not found one town that would fall under option three.
Got it.
And you had put it into Town Manager Team.
Yes. We put it out on the listserv with the other managers as well, and each, each and every town we heard from, the answer to the question was, we budget for the additional funds. So we're, we've got, the scope of our issue is pretty large, so we're trying to bridge it over two years, hence the hourly's moving to December 31st to try to help with that situation.
Yeah, no, and to be, and you said this at the beginning, but it's been a bit of time, a few minutes here have gone by. We're discussing the non-union salaried employee group here.
Correct.
Correct.
That's the only impact.
Correct.
Right.
Assuming that we do the December 31st payout for union employees.
That's right. No.
No.
Non-hourly.
Hourly. Not salaried. This is all non-union.
This is all non-union?
Yeah. So the 123124 is applicable to hourly employees that are non-union.
Okay.
These three options apply only to salaried employees.
So I just, just to clarify, you're actually, it actually does apply to union, but all of our union folks are hourly, so they will get paid on the 31st.
Yep.
Yeah. And that's the analysis we did.
So these scenarios apply to our salaried, non-union employees.
Correct.
That's the pool we're working in.
Yes.
We don't really have flexibility on any of the others because of contract language.
We have the flexibility to do what we're going to do, which is to move a payday by one day, which we're going to pay them early. I'm not sure anybody's going to have a lot of problem with that, but we do, I've talked to the DOL, we can do such things. It just allows us, like I say, to take advantage of a little bit of bandwidth we happen to have this year.
Yeah. Because there were so many positions that remained open throughout the year.
Exactly.
Got it.
I think that, I think that option one, while nobody's going to be happy, I think people are least disturbed by it. We continue to move, I mean, I can't really, I can't really look at taxpayers and say we're going to give, you know, a full increase plus 27 pay periods. It's, it's just not palatable in the budget. So, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of keep up with inflation with a 2% COLA, we're going to pay that 27th, which is, it's a one-time pay, you won't get it every year, but we're going to do it. But it'll keep employees moving, you know, against the cost of living next year at least.
And to repeat, that seems, in your canvas of other towns, who are really, who we're competing against to retain employees, that's the option that seems to be the most prevalent.
So we, we asked the question, do you pay the 27th or not? We did not ask, what else do you do to get by with it? We left that. You know, we're very sensitive to retaining, we're very sensitive to the impact on the budget, so it's, it really felt like it had to be a balancing act that was internal to, you know, the town itself.
Yeah, the short answer to that is we did more with it. Most towns, like I said, they just looked at it in terms of a pure, we've got this extra pay period and we're budgeting for it. And we're maneuvering a little bit within that framework to try to get something that's more palatable for the FY25 budget.
All right, here's another question, if you're willing to entertain it.
Of course.
There are three of the five of us here tonight. Is this something that needs to be decided tonight or can we wait for the full board?
I'll look at you.
I mean, I hate to put you all on the spot, but we're trying to button up budgets, create defaults, and we do need to get moving. In the reason we didn't come to you earlier is because I wanted to get through November pays and be able to analyze budget versus actual and see what we had for bandwidth and does the, does the hourly group work in 24? And so we just needed to wait, but I really don't want to wait much longer.
Thank you.
But we, you know, serve at your pleasure. If you decide you need another two weeks, then that's, that's what it is.
No, I mean, that was the question, and I think you're saying a decision that I would be helpful.
Would be helpful.
We have spent so much time and money really working hard to retain employees in the post-pandemic landscape. So I guess I feel that reluctantly, if option one gives us the best chance to continue our work along that line, then that's the option that I would back tonight.
I agree with what you just said.
I'm very reluctant to do it, given our previous conversation. But retention of our staff is really critical, especially where we have so many open spots So if I have to decide tonight, option one sounds like what I would, but I, you've been involved in the discussions, do you have any insights for us?
I just like to say, I share, I share your reluctance. I can 100% stand behind option one because I have been involved in the conversations and I want to give the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Stevens, a lot of credit because these three options before us were not the original options.
Yep.
And they have worked incredibly hard. And I remember the fact that you can still look at me with a straight face and throw something at me. I drove this man crazy trying to get him to explain this to me because for the life of me, I couldn't figure out how this happens every 11 years and why there's a 27th pay. And I just, so thank you for your patience with me because that first meeting was, I'm sure frustrating for you because it was frustrating for me, so.
I mean, I think if we can't explain it, then where's the job done?
So where we've come from there to these three options, and that's due to the hard work of the executive team, not only looking at where we're at as a town, but looking at what surrounding communities are doing, getting several legal opinions, reaching out to the state. You know, this is, this is not an easy request of them, of us, but the reason that I can stand behind option one with reluctance is because I know the work that they've put into trying to find a way to be fair to our employees that we want to retain. And, you know, folks have been hearing from us over the last year about how important it is to retain our talented employees, how much it impacts our budget when we lose employees and then have to recruit, retrain, lose them again. And that's something that, you know, you don't think of every day, particularly when you look at revales, you're looking at a tax bill. But, you know, what it costs the town to have to continue to recruit and advertise and retrain far exceeds, you know, a small increase in wages. And we have spent a lot of time, so it's, it's one of those, it's a balancing act and it's difficult.
Yeah, we've calculated about the retraining and all of that in our analysis on paying people and retaining. And after several months, if not years, of unfulfilled positions, this is not an easy decision to make to add to a budget number, but I don't see another option, at least there isn't another one for me right now, so.
So I can, you know, I can, I can stand behind option one. Most importantly, I can explain option one if folks, you know, ask. And, you know, it's tough, I mean, you know.
And the good news is, is you've found a way to take those other classes of employees or class of employees and move them to 2024 where we have some, some money available under the budget.
Yeah. Payroll is a 550 to 600,000 without benefits in it, exercise every two weeks.
Yeah.
With benefits, this doesn't have to include benefits because it's an additional pay, but it's...
I am aware. We sign those ones.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Yeah, we see those numbers.
When we first started to talk.
And you know, your questions for option three were great, and they were questions that I asked as well. And I just, I have a hard time with, you know, I mean, these are employees and, you know, we talk about all the work that we do, but we're an employer. And folks taking the hit that they're going to take on the health insurance with inflation still being where it's at, asking people who are, you know, accustomed to getting something in their paycheck, some folks really have to watch that budget. And I know we do as taxpayers, but I, option three just didn't work for me at the end for that reason.
I have a comment to make about process, but I'd like to move ahead and get the motion.
Do you want to make the note?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, I know if you wanted to talk about the...
It's a process-related thing and I want to talk about it after.
Fine, okay. But I'll, I'll say that now this caught you by surprise, you've been the Finance Director for only a couple of years here, so we've got 11 years to work out for when next time it happens.
We've talked about that.
Good. If there's no other comments or questions, then I'd entertain a motion to authorize option one as outlined in the Finance Director's November 25, 2024 memo to the board, where employees receive a 2% cost of living increase and are paid 27 times in FY25.
So moved.
Before I second, do we want to reference the 20,000 cuts or no?
Can you second it? We can discuss?
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second discussion. One of the things I had said earlier is that I'm reluctant to use these numbers because they're still fluid, they could go down even more.
I forgot that, yeah, thank you.
Is that, okay. Any other comment?
Nope.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0, Mr. Shartrun.
So my comment on process, I served on a select board for six years from 2012 to 2018, and now I've served on this board for two years. I love the fact that you meet with the E-Team on a regular basis. It's not possible for the entire board to do that. That would break 91A laws. We are not allowed to meet except in public. But the fact that you sit in on those meetings and spend so much time doing that and represent not just this board, but the taxpayers and citizens of this town when you're there, you're thinking about them, it really makes the process of the select board work so much better. And I'm very grateful for all that time that you put in. It's not insignificant, you do have a day job. This is not your day job. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate you doing all that work.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the executive team welcoming the select board chair in to work alongside of you. It really makes the job of the select board so much easier. When I compare the work of this select board to that previous select board, it was a good board, but the work of this board is happening at such a higher level because of that configuration with you being involved with the executive team and the, and the fact that there is an executive team. It really, things are really, you know, and this is not a great thing, but, but we're doing the best we can in a situation that's dictated by the calendar, and the process is just so high and so well-done, and the results that come out of that process are so much better. And so I'm very grateful.
Appreciate, I appreciate you saying that. And you said this earlier, and I, and I know we have to move on, but I, I want people to understand that this board spent a lot of time with a consultant last year, and, you know, we found some money in the budget that was, that was not being used due to all of the vacancies that we had. And we brought somebody in to look at the organization as a whole, to talk about succession planning, how we can improve our organization. And, and the amount of money that was spent, it's been... And the amount of money that was spent, it's been spoken about publicly, was thirty thousand dollars. It's probably the best thirty thousand dollars this town's ever spent on a study because that study has not sat on a bookshelf one day. It hasn't collected any dust at all. And this board back in April, Mr. Keegan presented his findings in February this year. And during our goal setting in April, we really looked at all of the things that we could do that did not cost the taxpayers any money. It did not increase the budget at all. And one of those things, there were many, but one of those things was the creation of the E team. And it's incredibly important that we recognize that Mr. Dean was willing to adapt and adopt his managerial style to include this executive team. And I thank you for your comments that you said about me. But I have to say that these three people, Ms. Roy's not here this evening, they meet several times a week, and they're getting a lot of work done. And some of these difficult decisions that we have to make or some of these difficult presentations that we need to make to our citizens, we've improved as a town because of this executive team. Because they can come here, they can answer our questions, they can answer the citizens' questions. We can make videos. It just really, it's awesome to be able to work with this team. And it's awesome to be able to work with a board that was willing to go forward with the study. And I think Mr. Dean, history will say that this was the best thirty thousand dollars that town ever spent.
Yeah, and we don't work in a silo.
Right.
Right, that's a really big deal. Everyone is sitting in the meetings, they're brainstorming, they're working so well together. The E team, I am very grateful that what Mr. Keegan brought to us, the recommendations were incredible, opened our eyes to a lot of things we knew we needed to adjust and adapt. And he gave us some wonderful recommendations. And thank you all for carrying those out so positively, too.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, Nigga's point is great. Russ, you did embrace this concept, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're done.
Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family, Mr. Stevens.
Sorry for the sermonizing, but it's just the process is so much higher. I'm very appreciative.
Have a great Thanksgiving, Corey.
Thank you.
Okay, next update is from our town planner, Mr. Sharples, who's going to give us an update on the public safety complex. Sorry to drag you out tonight, Dave, but we've been looking forward to this update.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I think I recommended coming here and doing that, so I'm behind it as well. Thank you for having me here to give you an update because I wanted to take this opportunity to discuss what we've been up to with the new police station, fire substation, since I last appeared before you on August fifth. And that was to request regarding this project, last time we spoke about this project at one of your meetings, is to, I requested to execute the contract with T-Gas or Ted Galante Architectural Studios. That's T-Gas. So first thing we did since then, because before, you know, I already talked about it, we did the land clearing, we did the geotech and so forth because I came for that hundred thousand, which I'll mention a little bit later. So we got that, you know, kind of the site cleared, and we did some investigative work. But then, once we got T-Gas on board, we took the conceptual floor plan that was in the LBA documents because they created programming, they defined like, what are the needs of the fire department? What are the needs of the police department? What square footage is it going to take to meet those needs? And they had a program of a little over twenty thousand square feet. And they had a concept of a building on that site. So that's where we're at when T-Gas took it over. They took the conceptual floor plan and the programming for both departments and started refining that and, you know, taking the site characteristics into a little more detail. And T-Gas has been excellent to work with. They've been super collaborative, they solve problems. They're very good at problem solving, which is great to have with really anybody. It's a great skill to solve problems. But they've been really good at it. We've held weekly meetings with them, you know, Russ, the assistant town manager, Corey, the finance director, police chief, deputy police chief, deputy fire chief, fire chief, myself, the building inspector, our David Hurley from CHA, our owners' project manager, OPM. We've been meeting weekly. We went through several renditions, had several in-person meetings where in-person meetings were needed. You know, we met over at the fire station a couple of times to really kind of refine that floor plan, make sure the flow works for the police department's operations and the fire department's operations. And really culminated into a meeting a week ago Friday, just not this past Friday, but a week ago, the deputy fire chief, deputy police chief, and myself drove down to Cambridge and met at Ted, his office and his team there. And we kind of went over the final plans because we had a few issues that we still were grappling with. There was like a fitness room. One was the fitness room where it was kind of in the police, so fire had to go through on the other side of the Sallyport to get to the fitness. And it should be shared, and we tried to, like, can we, can you have a, you know, can you enter it from the fireside and the police side? So then they, you know, they can go in and then go out. And they were able to do that. They had, you know, shifted the car. So they were able to address, we had just a handful of issues left. They were able to address them all. So we're at a point where we got a pretty good, solid floor plan. It maintained all the programming. The police seemed very happy with the layout, and fire seems very pleased with the layout as well. So now that we have that floor plan, now we can kind of start, you know, diving into it a little more. The, so, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But net zero, that's also been, that was in the warrant to be, to make this building net zero. That has been a consistent discussion point at almost every meeting. Now that the floor plans are pretty much set, we have started the MEPF design, which is mechanical and electrical plumbing and fire protection. So that's really important when it comes to net zero is what components are the HVAC system? What are we using? What type of, you know, heat, hot water, you know, because those are the demands? What are we using to get that? We want to get the most efficient systems in there because the more efficient the systems, the less electricity you have to generate, electricity you use to run those systems. So we're starting, just to get into that, part of Ted's team or the T-Gas team is they hired the green engineer, who's a subconsultant who does exactly this. At tomorrow's weekly check-in, we are going to go over having a meeting with them to start and kind of further refine that net zero component. And everyone involved so far, you know, the experts that involved so far appear to believe that we can accomplish this within the approved budget. So, you know, that's not, I can't say that is going to be the final answer, but that's what they're saying. They're saying, you know, they believe we can do this. So, yes, that's. Another topic of the discussion has been the site itself now is positioning the building because the finished floor height is going to matter. I mean, that, this building, I mean, this site is from Continental, it gently rises up, you know, toward the back of the site. So it's about an eight foot drop, ten foot drop in, you know, total in the corners. So that presents a challenge. It not, it doesn't necessarily present a challenge if it was all sand, but it's not all sand. It is a lot of rock. If you've been out there since it's cleared, it's basically all rock. We did have the geotech go out there, and they did boreings, and they drilled. And then DPW was gracious enough to dig some test pits with their heavy equipment, their Volvo excavator. They pretty much hit refusal everywhere between two and four feet. So what we didn't know from DPW's equipment, it wasn't strong enough to see if that was a, you know, Volkswagen sized boulder or was that ledge? So their equipment couldn't do that and couldn't move that. So we, next step is we got to get into big equipment and see if we can move some of these. So is it just huge rocks or is it ledge? So that's going to matter because huge rocks can be kind of moved out of the way, broken up a little bit, you know, split, used for a wall, where ledge blasting, so forth. So we're working on that. We're, in the near future, we're going to figure out exactly where we are with that and what the site contains. And then we'll do some calculations on exactly if it is ledge, what that quantity of ledge is and what it's going to take to get down to the finished floor level we need. So we're looking at two oh eight, two ten. I mean, the higher you go, it's better, you can get rid of, you know, do less ledge. But the higher you go, then the slopes matter coming, you know, with the fire apparatus and so forth, coming in and out of the building. So you can't just say, oh, this is where, you know, like, so it has to be all of a balance of the site. So we're working on that. We will be impacting, there are two wetlands on the site. One is, as you're looking at the site from Continental, there's a set, there's like a little clump of trees that we left there on that. There is a small pocket wetland that basically was created from the drainage that's there. There's a drainage that Jillian Lane was developed and has a detention pond that feeds a drive pipe that goes under Jillian and deposits, there are stormwater runoff here. And then there's a head wall there that goes underneath Continental. So it causes like a little standing water from the drainage. So it is classified as a wetland, it's a drainage area. We tried to, I mean, this was shown on the concept plans that LBA created. It was, you know, there was an access point there. It was shown, we likely knew that it was going to be impacted, but we tried to avoid it. The other one was also impacted, we've been able to avoid that. We're not going to, the one on the left is a little bigger, a little more value to its functions and values. But this one, there's no way we're going to, we're going to impact some of it. It's very small, I mean, it's almost, you know, kind of us right here. But we are going to impact a little bit. We're trying to minimize it to the extent possible. But, and we tried turning the building so it doesn't line up with Continental, but it kind of gets away from the wetland. Still would have a little bit of impact, but also it affected our ability to put solar panels on the roof. Because south is, it would be perfect to have the building right lined up, and we could get the most. So when we tilted the building like this, the solar panels kind of had to go at an angle. So it holds less solar panels. So it was kind of a trade off. And we decided to turn the building to get the most PV on the roof. So we're going to have to move, you know, move ahead with a wetlands permit application, wetlands dredge and fill at that time. I mean, it's not, it's not, rises to a level of, it's not over ten thousand square feet, so it's not any in lieu payment or mitigation or anything like that. We were also able to, one thing, we were also able to avoid the installation of a radio tower and a microwave link on the site. That was expected, and it was going to be a very large tower. I forget what it was, well over a hundred feet. And the base of it, you know, the concrete, the concrete base, the tower itself, the microwave link was going to be, I mean, we heard some quotes, you know, several hundred thousand dollars for this. And we looked into actually fiber, running fiber from downtown, a police station downtown here, running fiber, all new fiber from this police station all the way out to the water tower and then to the new site. And that would provide, so we wouldn't need a tower. And we've gotten some preliminary quotes, not, well, we did get some quotes in writing, but it was different. It was from over here on Water Street, not far, but they were like seventy thousand dollars. So even adding from there to, you know, here, it's still going to be well under a hundred thousand, so a fraction of the cost. So we're not going to do the tower, which is going to save a lot of money, and it's going to save a lot of valuable site space because this is a small, small site. I mean, it's one point, it's less than two acres for a, you know, for a twenty two thousand square foot police fire substation that needs to take large fifty foot apparatus, you know, thirty, wow, thirty two feet apparatus, and swing it around and, you know, get in the building. We were also, one thing that was great that wasn't shown on the concept plan and wasn't envisioned initially is a drive-through apparatus bay. So they were able to design it so you can come off a Continental, drive around the building, drive into the bay, and then out the other side. Like they have here, but they have so much equipment here, they can't do it because they have, you know, but they will have the ability to do that, either go straight in and then go around the back, whichever way they want. But they will have a drive-through apparatus bay. That was a goal of theirs, and we were able to accommodate that.
Fire substation.
That's the fire substation, yeah. The Sallyport isn't, they don't need it to be drive-through, they can back it up. It's, you know. So there's that, we got that. So the other thing we've been doing was we issued an RFQ for, a request for qualifications for a construction manager and received about ten proposals, I think nine or ten. I forget exactly, but we assembled an interview panel that included the police chief, deputy police chief, fire chief, deputy fire chief, town manager, assistant town manager, building inspector, CHA, our owners' project manager, and Ted Galante from T-Gas joined us and myself. So we were, oh, and I think, yeah, Rob St. Laurent from CHA and Dave Hurley. So there were two folks from CHA represented. We decided to, we interviewed five firms, and we decided to negotiate a scope and fee with Ekman Construction out of Bedford, a really good crew of people. They were all very qualified, so it was one of those, again, where we couldn't, we felt we couldn't miss. We interviewed, but, you know, we felt Ekman rose to the top. They had a ton of experience. Two of them were thirty years with Ekman, one was nineteen years, the other one was thirteen years. So out of the four of them that we're getting, those are the people that are going to be working with us day to day, the least person at thirteen years experience. So, and they have tons of experience with public safety buildings in there. They're actually in the process of, you know, building now and so forth.
Okay.
So we intended to ask, we got a, we requested a contract for pre-construction services because there's kind of two components to a construction manager. It's pre-construction services, that's services from right now through design to construction. And then there's a construction contract. We decided, because we want to get them on board right now because we're at schematic design with the architect, and that's a great time to get the CM on board, and I'll explain that in a second. So we just decided to do a contract for pre-construction services. They provided us a contract for, a proposal for twenty thousand dollars, which is well below what our OPM and other folks said and what they're doing, just my math. We were like, okay, we don't even want to, we don't even need to negotiate with these folks. We can go ahead and execute the contract because we thought that was an extremely fair price that they were offering. So we did intend to execute the agreement, but we wanted to come here tonight just to let you know because we're going to take it out of that hundred thousand dollars that you regionally approved. And our purchasing policy doesn't require us to come for that amount. But I wanted to come here and just, without any objection, we will be executing that agreement tomorrow with Ekman Construction. Also, T-Gas is finalizing the SD documents, which is schematic design. It's schematic design, design development, and construction documents. That's kind of the three, you know, SD, DD, and CD. And those are the three phases of design. And it's design development where those are bid documents. Those, you can go out and they have the specificity so people can price that out and know exactly, and give you a bid and say, I'll do it for RACs. So we're at the stage of schematic design. And during that, now that Ekman's involved, we're going to start a construction cost estimate, like, immediately. And it's going to take a while to develop that cost estimate. But by, you know, maybe mid-January, we will have a cost estimate on what we've designed so far. There's a lot of details still kind of missing, but this is the beauty of the construction manager at risk delivery method, which we're doing compared to the design bid build, that we're keeping track of price the whole time. And we have the person that's going to be, you know, building this for us, overseeing it, pricing it out so we can minimize, I mean, maybe not completely avoid, but we can minimize kind of the risk of, you know, large price increases later. Because a lot of times when you do design bid build, you do the entire design period, you do not price anything out, you're just, an architect's designing the whole thing. And then you go out to bid and, you know, kind of cross your fingers and hope you have enough money that you fund, you know, funded for, which is okay in a, in a, in a lot of markets, it's all right. But in this market, you know, this is the way to go. Because, you know, like, you never know with the price increases. So they're doing it, they know it, they're doing other buildings right now, they're seeing what construction is in this market. So I think we're going to, you know, this, this method is our best chance to stay on track, on schedule and on budget. So we are looking, speaking of the schedule, we're looking at continuing with finalizing schematic design here shortly, going through divine development, construction documents in the spring, going out to bid, to have the construction manager will go out to bid, bid it out to the subs and get a guaranteed maximum price somewhere in the spring, early summer, and start construction, you know, July-ish. And they anticipate a fourteen, sixteen month construction schedule. So what we knew before, we thought fall of twenty twenty six. And as of right now, we're still on that schedule and looking, looking pretty good. I think we got a good team, I think we've gotten lucky with the, with the people we've chosen. And hopefully that continues, you know, smooth sailing continues. I mean, there's going to be issues, it's a construction project, but so far, so good.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Sharples?
The pre-construction contract, has that already been looked at? Who's, that's that?
We're reviewing that.
You're reviewing it now? So you feel pretty confident you can sign it tomorrow?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good.
It's, it's very simple. There's not a lot of boilerplate language for the...
Long enough, I understand. If you say you're confident, then I, I...
Yeah. It took me just three months to do the 10 Hampton Road, so I understand. Yeah, this one's, this one's straightforward.
And do you need any kind of motion for that or is that already covered in previous motions?
Actually, we talked about this and it's, it doesn't meet the threshold of 25,000 is typically what we bring to you.
25,000 threshold, thank you. Don't need a motion.
100,000.
Yeah, no, got it.
But certainly, but certainly to let you know before we get into a construction contract process. You know, let you know that Ekman was selected and that we plan on going forward with them.
Great, thank you.
And we now have all the components of the team on, on board with Ekman and with TGAS and with CHA, so.
Confident with the team.
Equally excited.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
All the major components, there is what, we're gonna do some building commission, commissioning, and that will be a separate contract, but that's a, you know, the, the major, the three players, the construction manager, the owners project manager, and the design team are on board. So we have our full team now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, my, I don't, I don't have questions. I've had the privilege of listening to, to you describe this process to the Facilities Advisory Committee. And I would just say, you know, you cited luck. I think luck is a residue of a great process that you've designed. So thank you for your, your great process that you've really, you've dug in and you've really mastered that this is the best way to go forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
Appreciate it.
Look forward to more updates in the future. Appreciate you coming tonight and letting us know where you're at.
Yeah, happy, happy to be here. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, Jim.
Good night.
Our last discussion item is a continuation of a conversation we had at our last meeting. Thank you both. Have a great night.
Good night. Have a good Thanksgiving. Thank you.
We had an opening on the Sustainability Advisory Committee and we interviewed two very, very qualified applicants. And we spoke of perhaps changing the makeup of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, which as it stands now is seven voting members with no alternates. And Mr. Shartran, I'll turn it over to you and tell us about your conversation with Kristen.
Yeah, you had asked me to reach out to Kristen Murphy, our staff side support for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And I did not do that until today at noon, but she beat me to the punch because she had reviewed the agenda. That's how good she is. She had sent me an email at 9:43 this morning, and I'm just gonna read that email. Good morning, Dan. I see the SAC charges on the agenda for this evening along with the potential, two potential new member names. If, if SBA Select Board is considering expanding the committee, would you consider adding additional positions as an alternate so that it does not bump the quorum threshold? I'm really hoping to get beyond the quorum page, which we've been facing on a regular basis, so we can continue to be increasingly more productive together as a group. That is Kristen's email to me as of 9:43 this morning. I agree with her. We have two great applicants. We should assign one of them to the open regular spot and assign another to the, this newly created alternate spot that we will hopefully...
Do I, two alternate spots?
Two alternate spots. But slot one of those applicants in. Kristen also said on the phone with me when I spoke with her during the noon hour today that one of the items she would like to have on the agenda for the SAC is to see if there's someone who maybe struggles to make the meetings on a regular basis, who's currently a regular member who might wanna step back to an alternate spot.
Wonderful, great idea.
So you may get additional movement here.
Yeah.
But I think we should slot these two applicants in tonight. And if you want my recommendation on who to put where, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, let's start with, let's amend the makeup. And based on what you just read and our conversation last time we were together, I would entertain a motion to amend the Sustainability Advisory Committee membership from seven voting members to seven voting members and two alternate positions.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Terms.
The current term is April 2027.
For the fall, right?
For the fall. And then for the alternate, Mr. Dean, we, I mean, we can...
You can set it at three years.
Okay.
For both of them?
For both of them, sure.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Breeling as the regular voting member with a term ending April 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
And then I'd like to make a motion to appoint Julie Gaunt to the, one of the new alternate positions we've just created with a term ending in April 2027.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Again, she may be moving to a regular member if there's a current regular member who wants to move to an alternate spot.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood.
Thank you.
Fantastic. There's a motion in a second, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero. And we thank Jim and Julie for volunteering and thank you for the work that you did to set this up.
It's a pleasure. Thank you for the assignment.
We are gonna move into a regular business and again, select woman Belandra's volunteered to act as clerk this evening. Thank you so much.
Hey.
I will say, if I can make a recommendation, I think you may be able to get creative and group some of the land use...
So I can do that if there are the amounts, is that what you're referring to?
That's...
So I would still have to say all the map and lot numbers.
All the map and lot numbers.
But I can move them all at once.
For the amount and the...
Yes.
Cause the, the amount is the same in the year.
Yes, thank you. I looked at that and I couldn't remember, so I can do that. Oh, there's two more down here. Okay. Got it. I'll give it my best shot.
You're gonna do great.
But I'm gonna start at the top of the page. Map 104, I move for solar exemptions for map 104, lot 48, and the amount of $1,000 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
I move to accept the 2024 municipal data certification, data certification of the DRA sales ratio information and memo.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Okay, so the first two, okay. I move for land use change tax. Map 47, lot 7, and the amount of $500,000 for the tax year 2024.
So, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Map 47, lot 6, and the amount of $100,000 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Okay, so there are three of that one. Uh, map 54, lot 6. Map 54, lot 5, unit 35. Map, map 54, lot 5, unit 40, and the amount of $100 each for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Okay. And this is several, so bear with me. Map 54, lot 5, unit 20. Map 54, lot 5, unit 21. Map 54, lot 5, unit 22. Map 54, lot 5, unit 23. Map 54, lot 5, unit 24. Map 50, map 54, lot 5, unit 25. Map 54, lot 5, unit 26. Map 54, lot 5, unit 27. Map 54, lot 5, unit 28. Map 54, lot 5, unit 29. Map 54, lot 5, unit 30. Map 54, lot 5, unit 31. Map 54, lot 5, unit 32. Map 54, lot 5, unit 33. Map 54, lot 5, unit 9. Map 54, lot 5, unit 10, and the amount of $7,500 each for the tax year 2024.
I would second that flawless motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero.
I believe I have one more.
One more.
Map 54, lot 5, and the amount of $50 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Well...
I don't think I missed any, right?
You did not.
Done, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and then Mr. Dean, we have another abatement here.
Yes, this is the Unitil, this was actually a printer error where Unitil was billed at both the residential tax rate plus the utility tax rate. So the request is to abate the, the residential rate.
Which is the 137,266.
Right. And that will be, a bill will not be generated. You can see that the memo talks about that. There's no refund and a corrected bill will be sent. So an abatement would be processed through the software, but that's just to remove, to remove the incorrectly billed amount and we won't be refunding them 137,266 dollars.
So what do you need for a motion?
Just to approve it as presented.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
So we, we cut a bill for both the residential amount and the commercial?
We produced a bill.
For both?
For both, out of the system.
And they caught it?
And they caught it.
Obviously.
They proved it.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Was caught in the proof.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Oh, so it was never actually sent?
Correct, it won't be sent.
We caught it.
We caught it on our end.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're processing it through the abatement system for the purposes of bookkeeping.
Even better, we caught it.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the correction of the incorrect billing at parcel 46-3 as presented by the deputy tax collector in the memo of November 13, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero. Thank you very much. Okay. And we had, we had one bid that we opened for the 2025 Downtown Mobile Food Vending License Agreement, that was Clyde's Cupcake.
And everything looks good on our end.
Okay, any questions from the board?
None.
Then I would entertain a motion to move forward in offering the 2025 Downtown Mobile Food Vending License Agreement to Clyde's Cupcakes upon receipt of payment of the license fee bill of $5,000 and current certificates of insurance for the use of the downtown space from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, and to grant the town manager or their designee the authority to sign said license agreement.
So moved.
Second, and I do have a comment. In our packet, there's approval from all the relevant department heads. I just wanted to make a note of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
So motion in a second, any further discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three zero. And we'll look forward to Clyde's remaining there. I believe that's it, Mr. Dean, so I'll turn it over to you for your town manager report, please.
Okay. So a few things tonight. One is that Swayze Parkway has been paved, the turnaround has been paved, and the handicap spaces are installed. They're all set to go. And we're now on the gates and we've had the posts installed as of today, and we should have the gates there very shortly, within the next couple of days. So we've been talking about just ways to get the word out to people about that the parkway is going to be reopened on that side of the, of the parkway. So if you do have any suggestions, let us know, but we're thinking obviously EXTV, press release, website and so forth. The only, the only other thing that popped up on the radar screen was the trailer and whether we wanted to put something out on the trailer. And I'm sort of indifferent to that, but if the board felt strongly about it, we certainly could do that.
So it'll be open for vehicular traffic at the north end to the turnaround.
Right.
And pedestrian traffic. It's still not open for pedestrian traffic, right? Or it is?
Pedestrian traffic on, right now it's closed.
It's gonna honor the warrant articles.
So there'll be pedestrian traffic up to...
The pavilion.
Pavilion.
Yeah.
Gates on either side.
And to protect the pedestrians and bicyclists.
Correct.
And then there'll be entry from the north end, from the...
New Fields roadside.
New Fields roadside. And, and there'll be a turnaround and handicap parking.
Correct.
Just wanna make sure I understood.
Yes.
Got it.
I think all those ways to advertise it, I'd also reach out to the reporter at Seacoast Online.
Okay.
That might be nice to get that out there.
Yeah.
I do wanna say before, turn this back and talk about it during the Swayze Parkway Select Board Committee reports, but I worked with Dwayne Staples, the chair of the trustees and Mr. Cronin, because we collectively all didn't think of the Holiday Parade and how the Holiday Parade utilizes the parkway. And Mr. Cronin is gonna make sure that those gates are open and that all of the floats and everybody will be able to turn around as, as usual, so.
Great. Go ahead. Thanks. Moving over to Parks and Rec, the 10 Hampton Road, the contract, I think Dave mentioned it, but I just wanted to reiterate it in case it was missed. The contract with Hampshire Development Corporation is signed, so that project is moving forward, which is great news. We've been waiting for that for a while, as you know. I was able to participate in the Police Department, COLIA accreditation process a couple of weeks ago on Monday, was a very successful process, and the chief was very happy with the, the results. And the department did a fantastic job during the, during the assessment phase. So we're excited about the accreditation process continuing. They've got a couple of more steps to go through, but it looks very good from their perspective and ours, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, great, great report.[1645.04] Yeah. Great, great report. The West Side Drive project, that is alive and well. The bid for that will go to advertisement in December. So just to let everybody know, who's maybe out at West Side Drive wondering and may not know, we're going to bid on that in December. So that project will be underway in the springtime. So it's been a long time waiting and we appreciate everybody's patience while that process has been ongoing. But we think we've got a great project, so we're looking forward to getting in the ground. And then Pickpocket Dam, just an update on that. We were able to get an assessor list from Brentwood to notify people in Brentwood about the December 10 meeting, so that's happening. That's good news. And a letter has gone to the chair of the Brentwood Board just to outline the meeting of December 10.
Thank you.
As an open invitation and also to ask, actually ask Brentwood for a letter of support for removing the dam. So that, that's in the letter as well.
Time and place for the December 10 meeting?
6 o'clock at the library.
Thank you.
Yep.
And it's in our packet too, correspondence?
Yes. So and an email and a letter has been sent to Brentwood on that. So I think we've covered the bases as much as we can on that process.
We have fulfilled the promise that we made to the chair of the Brentwood Select Board back in May.
Correct. The lead service line program continues. So I know Steve Dalton appeared before you a couple of meetings back. He was talking about the, the lead service lines and then the unknown services. And just to remind everybody that we have a form on the Public Works website, that if you're interested in having somebody come out and take a look, you can fill out the form and the department will, will get in touch with you as far as trying to itemize and, and look for different, the unknown services and fill in those blanks. We're continuing with union negotiations. That continues next week. Fire and police, we have a meeting, meetings with and we have wrapped up, we think, Public Works, so that's good news. So we will have something hopefully to report to you at a future meeting. So stay tuned on that. And then just reaction from the staff, wanted to pass along our thanks to the board for recognizing the Staff Appreciation Days. There was a lot of positive feedback about that and I know everybody's really grateful for the board approval of that. So thank you to the, to the board for that. And there is a donation box downstairs for the Boy Scouts. We allowed for that last week. They are collecting for the NHS PCA. And then the final thing I had on my list was the parking permit. We did get those permits out to the downtown businesses, to the downtown developer of the Ioka and the Mario Ponti's project. And we did walk Water Street. Darren Winham and I did that on Friday and were able to visit many of the businesses and let them know what the circumstances were. So that, that looks good.
I received a visit from.
So, so far, so good on that.
Darren.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Darren got the lower, I got the upper half. Darren got the lower half.
You got the critical hotspot.
Yeah.
Right. Well, just general.
Thank you for doing that, Russ.
The general reaction was very, very positive.
Okay.
And very grateful to the board for taking the action that, that you took.
Thank you.
So they're, they're very happy and.
And the Caswell folks seem to be okay.
And we have signed permits from the developers, so we should be in good shape.
Awesome.
Knock on wood.
We certainly appreciate the patience of our business owners and I appreciate you and Mr. Winham doing that. Thank you.
Thanks. And that's what I have.
Okay. Select Board Committee reports. Select Woman Belanger?
I had a planning board meeting this past Thursday, November 21. Wiley Creek Planning Board Case 22349, Ray Farmstead Road was continued until February 27, 2025, per their request. River Woods, 5O, White Oak Drive was on the agenda. There was a presentation, a lot of public comment, and then it was tabled. The, the planning board didn't have any questions just yet. They wanted to hear from the public first. But it's been tabled to the next week, December 19 at 7:00 PM. And for the public, there's also open to the public, a sidewalk on December 5 at 8:00 AM. So that is open if anyone cares to attend. And then just for Arts and Culture, they canceled it for tomorrow for a lack of a quorum. December apparently was already canceled, so the next meeting for Arts and Culture is not until January 28.
Okay.
And that is it for my report.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Mr. Chartran?
Compiling my report. I attended the Budget Recommendation Committee CIP discussion on Thursday, 12:14, along with both of you. It was a rousing discussion. Great meeting. Lots of, lots of back and forth in a good way and lots of great viewpoints exchanged. And I was really happy with the end result of the Budget Recommendation Committee process. Always ably chaired by Mr. Bob Kelly, who I admire so much. And then I also attended another, on Thursday, 1 o'clock on the 21st of November, I attended another meeting of the business owners and, and, you know, citizens that are interested in eventually getting a train station, what we jokingly call the train game. And that happened on last Thursday at 1 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Dean, to that, and we need to look at bringing the Train Committee back, I think, in a more formal.
Yes.
Talk about that.
It needs to be reconstituted as a town committee and under the Select Board umbrella.
Maybe we could talk with Mr. Chartran about that.
I, yeah, I actually brought it up because it was mentioned last time and I brought it up to the committee and there were some thoughts. And rather than characterize those thoughts, would you have a conversation with Mr. Winham?
Yep.
About that. And I think he can encapsulate sort of.
Yep.
What the different thoughts were around the room.
Okay.
Some of the folks might be willing to go forward with that, some might not, but I.
I'll make an appointment with them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I did bring it up.
Okay. Let's see. CIP Night, I attended with both of you. Swayze Park Trustees met to open the bids for the maintenance for 2025 and awarded it to the incumbent. He's done a fantastic job. They got an update on the parkway. We talked about the holiday party. And the following day, that was the 20th, the following day on the 21st, Pearpoint Park Committee met. We talked about how we can go about fundraising, that activity next year and how funds would be collected, advantages of doing it through the policy that we have as opposed to others. And I offered to be the liaison between committee members and Mr. Stevens to try to work out how best to do that. So I think that will work out well. The fence is up, the new fence. It looks great. I want to thank Mr. Sharples, Mr. Eastman, Mr. Bisson, Keith Whitehouse and others.
Yeah, Bill Sumrall was one of the other gentlemen.
It looks really, it looks good. I think folks will be able to see through there and the Pearpoint Park Committee is going to move forward with collecting all of their suggestions and ideas from folks and present to the Select Board sometime early next year. And then I just wanted to follow up. I sat in with Mr. Dean, Ms. Roy and Mr. Stevens on the Kalia accreditation for the police department. And it was a really good meeting. The auditor that came up, the assessor that came up to meet with staff over the course of two days and she toured where the new facility was going to be and spoke with all different types of stakeholders in town. But one comment that she made that I just want to say, she's a police chief in North Carolina. And she actually took a lot of notes after meeting with Chief Poole and, and members of the police department because she's bringing back proposed changes for her police department based on what we're doing. So I really wanted to say that out loud. It was nice to hear that. It seems that we're ahead of the curve on a lot of different policing aspects.
So our assessor was grabbing some best practices.
Absolutely.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So wanted to mention that. And then I think that's.
I just wondered about the parade. The parade, we, the parade in town happens before our next meeting. Are we?
December 7.
Right. Do we have any notification of where we're, as a still locked board or?
I'm going to look at the town manager.
I haven't received anything formally yet, so. Soon as I, I'll go look for it and.
That would be great.
When I get it, we'll, we'll circulate it around.
Thank you.
If you could, yeah, reach out to us.
I will.
And great. I'm assuming the normal route?
The normal route, as far as I know.
I did hear that there is at least one big band coming from another district.
Oh, great.
Should be, should be good.
There's just been a lot of work over in that parking lot, so I don't know. So that's, I was wondering if we've heard anything.
We'll wait to hear back from you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Correspondence. We have a letter of support for two of the capital improvement plan projects, the public EV charging, as well as the Styrofoam recycling. And that came from the chair of the SAC, on behalf of the SAC, Chris Sigmont, and also a letter of support from a resident and owner of one of our businesses downtown in support of the Styrofoam recycling.
Could I comment?
Please.
I really appreciate Jessica from Symbidium Floral weighing in with a letter. She does have a lot of Styrofoam usage in the florist business. And it was great that she took the time to write this letter. Thank you, Jessica.
Appreciate that. We have a letter from the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration with the 2023 Town of Exeter Cyclical Monitoring. Mr. Dean, did you have anything to add to that?
This is just a benchmark for our revaluation process and we passed the test.
Excellent.
We are certified.
Letter of thanks from the Board of Trustees, the Exeter Historical Society for donation, correspondence from Xfinity on changing of services. There is a holiday block party being sponsored by the Exeter Area Chamber of Commerce and the Parks and Rec. And that's going to be held Thursday, December 5, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM in downtown Exeter. Again, the parade will be on December 7. And lastly, Mr. Dean alluded to this earlier, save the date, public information session on Pickpocket Dam removal, Tuesday, December 10, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Public Library in Exeter, 4 Chestnut Street. So with that, our board calendar took the liberty to go through January. Everything kind of lines up nicely. So we'll meet again December 9. I believe Bob Kelly will be presenting the Budget Recommendation Committee's recommendations. We meet again December 23 and then January 6. And that will lead up to our budget hearing on January 21.
Already in my calendar.
And that's, the 21st is a Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
All others are Mondays?
Correct. Okay. And I'd ask my colleagues, any other discussion this evening?
No.
And with that, Joanna, thank you very, very much. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family. And we wish those celebrating on Thursday a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving with your friends and family.
Indeed.
Thank you.
And to all of you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. I would then entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.